Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the citizen's forum. Anybody who would like to speak? Nope. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. I hereby move to adopt the consent agenda. Hearing no objections, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consensus. Ally, superintendent update?
Yeah, I'm gonna kick it to Emma first. We'll have our students get an update during this afternoon.
Yeah, so last time I talked about how our homeroom schedule changed a little bit this year. It was by grade level. So now we've implemented Raider Time, which is throughout the five days of the week. Teachers are able to hold students more liable and students can go where they actually need help. It's like a school by like study hall, I'd say. And so it's during homeroom. It's through a program called Security Flags. Students can not only see where they're assigned to, or they can see what teachers are available or where they would need help. The, we also have established a silent study area in the English area. Teachers are able to pull people with SST as well. Then the students' study area is voted amongst the student body. Recently, the one act play is going to stay. It was phenomenal, if you guys didn't see it. As well as the Red Raider showcase, which was band choir involved, was a big success as well. Also, DECA, a club at the high school, it's mostly like business management based. It's, they went to the ELCs, which is the Emerging Leaders Conferences. Last week, I talked to the president. They said it was fun and they learned a lot, so overall a success. Today, Student Council went to the Fall Summit at Green Bay, or you don't hear Green Bay today. There was a guest speaker. They did a lot of team building stuff. And yeah, overall, it's been a success.
Thank you. I'll just follow up with one more update. At the high school, we also had National Honor Society induction rate. That took place last week. And so we have a new batch of NHS inductees, so congratulations to those kids. Do you have any questions for Emma?
How's the acceptance of the new, asking students to come to teachers for extra help? How's that going from?
Overall, it's been pretty good, because the problem was before, like, because we're in the flex pod. And it's difficult, because you only have a select number of times you're open to go and choose where you want to go. And then like, oh, of all those times, your teacher's gonna be open that one time. So it's easier to like, be able to like, oh, I can go there now and I can actually get help. When like before, like, oh yeah, I can go find another teacher who's gonna tell me something completely different. So I would say it's going pretty well.
Good.
Tonight during course proposals, if you have, you have a student here. So I'm gonna be sure if you want to ask a couple of questions, just about experience, you get to. Hold on her way as a junior member on the board. I just, just a couple of updates from me. Just, I received a report card memo. Remember, we're not sharing those here with you yet. Of course, that'll be in December when we do that. We are, we just finished the second day of sale, working on our second hundred day plan. That's going very well. And then also we'll come, we'll have a discussion with you around the teacher clarity work at the December 3rd workshop. And I think there's probably updates, a couple more, I guess. Food service department, when we did a lunch for our vets. And that was at ADVM this year, the service was. And then they came, went over to the VFW hall and the district provided the lunch. And Pace helped serve that meal that day. You already know that Thanksgiving is coming, so I hope, you know, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving here in the community. And we will not have school on Wednesday, November 26th, and we'll return on Monday after Thanksgiving. So.
Any questions for Ally? Okay, thank you. Twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar?
Yep, I can talk to that as well. So we did have turned that in for the ask of the date, and that was approved. So the recommended calendar that we brought to you last time is in front of you tonight to be approved for the twenty-six, twenty-seven this school year.
And no changes have been made since it was?
No changes have been made. We've also let the calendar committee know. They were excited that it was accepted, so they also know that the start date was the August 31st. And so that's just that for your approval tonight.
I make a, I make a motion to approve the calendar?
A second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar as presented. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And you'll get that out on the website for everyone. Next up is new course proposals.
All right, so you guys do have a memo on box that outlines the new course proposals that we have this year. There are four of them, as well as other relevant updates that, you know, should be included for you guys to take a look at. But more importantly, we have some representatives from the high school here to speak to or answer any questions you might have about the proposals. So from our English department, we have Anna Karen Davis, and she brought forward the literature and film course. From our science department, we have Art Spurra. He's here, also representing Melissa Welsing, who was a part of writing up the two, split between our earth science course into that, Our Ever Changing Earth, and then the Principles of Weather, Climate, and Chain, or Oceans, excuse me. And then from our art department, we have Spencer Carls, who's also here with Amy Tubbs from our English department. But she does a lot with our one acts and our musical. And they have brought together the set construction and design course. So I'm just gonna kind of leave it to the board to ask any questions that you guys might have.
So the earth science class is being changed. Is that the one that became mandatory through the state?
It was. We, we made it a graduation requirement at one time. It was not mandatory from the state level. And so we've made some adjustments to that within, it's, I think, starting in twenty-two seven, it's no longer a graduating class required course, so.
So then these would be more elective type?
Elective in the science area, correct.
No, it doesn't. The course was originally a one, before it became a graduate mandatory course, it was a full year course. And then when we, when they made it into a required course, it went to a half credit. And so things got kind of pushed in. We took astronomy out and made a separate course for astronomy. And so now that it's no longer a required half credit of graduate, for graduation, we're looking to kind of expand it out and cover more things instead of just the one semester. So now we're gonna have the two semesters to work with.
Thank you. Do you want to go over or explain a little more about the literature and film course that is being offered?
Yeah, I guess I can speak on that. I was not always a great student in high school. And my senior year of high school, I took a literature and film class, and it really changed literacy for me. It became something that wasn't a punishment, but something that I could look forward to. So I tried to create a class with hesitant students in mind to kind of offer them an olive branch of, even if reading is not something that you tend to enjoy, if you watch the movie and you can compare it to that, you can get those same high order English skills in a different format. So being able to extract information, analyze it, and synthesize it with others, and then share it, is really the base idea there. And it will just be applied in a new sort of mode rather than just text.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask about the set construction and design. So I know that Tubbs, you were talking about that and probably including that with what we have going on in our music department and things like that. Is that kind of the plan with that class, to help with sets that are gonna be needed for musicals, one acts, things like that?
Yeah, and we do three seasons of theater. We have the fall one act, the winter musical, and the spring play in spring. So it would be a year-long opportunity. They could take it either semester. But I mean, we really like, it's a practical thing. So we talk about design, what are you gonna do, how are we gonna make it function, you know, for the performers and the directors and all that? And then how do you tweak that? And then learning how to safely construct things. And it's not like, you know, it's not like someone going into construction field, like, we're gonna build a wall that lasts forever. This is, we're gonna build a safe wall, but it doesn't have to be a true, you know, house, right? I don't know what.
And so there's a lot of art elements built into it, so the planning, sketching, drawing. And then tweaking those designs and plans, and then the actual physical construction of it. And then you were gonna hopefully run it as an art class, so then either myself or Aaron Scurio will be helping to run those classes. And then there'd be a lot of collaboration with whomever the director is at the time, and the music department and/or English department, all those directors that are involved, yes.
The other thing we liked about this class when they brought it forward is they talked about former students who are out doing these types of careers and bringing some experts in, either virtually or, or in person to kind of talk about lighting and, I don't know. They told us that we have a student that used to work in Australia, Sydney.
Yeah, there was a, she worked for the Sydney Opera House designing sets. We've got some people going to school for set design. We have a former student who sewed costumes for the Rockettes in New York. You know, like, you can make a viable living out of this. We've got people studying sound design, people working at Lighthouse Productions in Green Bay, doing lighting and sound design, like, you know, it's, it's a definite CTE career field that, you know, maybe not everybody is realizing that you can make a good living out of doing theater, the fun stuff, but it's, it's viable.
That was gonna be my next question, is if we, of course, saw that happening with youth partnership and things like that. Excellent, thank you.
So on the top, it says that you improve the financial impact, so our current staff is able to absorb these classes within the current schedule structure?
Correct.
And that's always dependent on what our course signups are too. So we do have to go through the scheduling process, and our hope is that students will have a high interest in these courses so that they can run, so. But it all depends on that.
Gotcha. Thank you. Can I make a motion to approve all of the new courses as presented?
There's a motion and a second to approve the new course proposals as presented. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Good luck with those new courses.
Thank you.
And next up is the data update, local and state assessments for literacy, social studies, and FPL focus.
All right, so we have a team that's helping to present again, so a different group of representatives. I probably know most of the people, but we have also Rhoda Wood, who is our district reading specialist and serves as a literacy coach, especially at the K-5 level. And then I think the other bookend is Deanna Paulzine, who is at the high school, and so she has a split role. She does part of program support, specialist for special ed. But then she also is our literacy coach at the ninth level, so I think you know everybody else, so won't go through those introductions. But I wanted to make sure you know, you knew those two. So tonight, we're spending time with you on literacy, social studies, and a behavior focus. Obviously, literacy and behavior are emphasis in our hundred day plans. We've seen this kind of before, and so really this is our, our focus of tonight. We're on those three areas. We're gonna talk about where we are and how did we get where we are. And then next meeting, we will come back and we'll really focus on where we're going and what we're going to do to get where we want to be. And then, you know, obviously, the data, as we look at it, helps to drive whether we're making a difference or not. So with that, I think Rhoda kicks us off with literacy.
Yeah. So we'll be sharing our, our student data for literacy. We're gonna share the state forward exam, the AIMS Web Plus HMH growth measure, and the, the pre-ACT and ACT scores with literacy. And then for the state assessment for the Wisconsin Forward, this is the assessment, I'm sure you're familiar with this, with the third through eighth grade students and 10th grade students. And then Michelle and Brenda will share those specific results, how the students performed in the English language arts portions. And those scores are broken down with an overall ELA, a reading, and a written language.
So the first scores that you are gonna see are for the overall ELA in grades three through eight. And you can see that we range from fifty-eight percent advanced in meeting to sixty-two percent across. And then the next line is broken down, they're broken down by each grade level. So this is third grade, and the third grade is that first year that they take the forward exam. And fourth grade, fourth grade is the year where they have the most success, because they take ELA, math, science, and social studies. And then we have fifth grade scores.
Then we have the sixth grade scores at sixty-two, seventh grade scores at fifty-nine, and eighth grade scores at sixty. And those are the overall ELA results. This is where we compare ourselves to other schools in the FRCC. We did notice that we did see a drop from like second place in 2023, 24, to fourth place in the conference for scoring in ELA. We also have the, the portion of the ELA assessment that is specifically related to reading. And so here's the broad scope, with the lowest being a sixty percent and the highest being a sixty-six percent.
And this is the third through eighth grade written language results from third through eighth. And you will see that it ranges from fifty-four percent up to sixty-one percent.
We're staying pretty static in the elementary level and seeing a dip, and then staying pretty static again at the middle school level. With reading and writing being the fundamental portions for all the other subjects, is the focus truly on the universal curriculum?
Right now, yes, in middle school, we're definitely focusing on that. We're specifically pulling apart those, the specific components that make up reading and working towards those better. I can tell you historically, the classes that are with us right now have been lower scoring over time with the cohort, sub-cohort itself. However, the, the rate of improvement has been, the trajectory has been gone up each year, if you're following the grades themselves.
So is this one of those where the cut scores all changed? I mean, we're one of the only districts that went down, if we're being honest, right? If we're looking at the FRCC comparisons. So did the cut scores change, and that's why everybody else went up? Or I'd like some insight of what, what you guys are seeing, or what, what your thoughts are on our comparison to the FRCC results.
So we, like, we broke down, like, just in particular with middle school, because these results are over.
No, as, as a district, I guess, maybe that's a bigger question.
Yeah, because I can tell you about middle school, but I don't know if you, which portion you want.
So this is one that the cut scores changed? Can you ask that?
Ah, they changed two years ago.
Okay, so now they changed this year on the cut scores, okay. So we saw a lot, we s-
Some kids.
Yeah, absolutely right. The kids changed. So what, what's your insight here?
Yeah, we had some conversation yesterday, looking at, they give us a value-added score. And definitely ELA came up as, you know, compared to math, we were concerned, because math, just about everything was over that value-added score, and which is three. So we had the colored in blue boxes, which made us happy on math. ELA, a little bit too many the other way. And, and, you know, the one area that obviously concerns us the most is, well, there's two or three areas. It's our special ed kids, there's gaps, so I don't know if you want to talk about the work that, you know, conversations you've been having specifically with special ed teachers, and then we can talk about the other subgroups as well.
Right. So there've been gaps, and this is not just a Pulaski concern, this is all over the nation. The gaps in special education and reading are pretty substantial, and they have them. And so what we've been doing is putting together a systemic process to be able to, you know, really implement those scientific research-based interventions, training our teachers, we've had multiple training opportunities, having our program support teachers, be able to support our teachers as they're implementing these interventions, and then monitoring that progress. So we're getting really tight with that, so we can see accelerated growth. It's like an urgent, imminent need right now, and we have to see these kids make that progress. And so specific skills that we're trying to target for kids who are maybe not developing those phonemic awareness, phonics fluency skills early on in their reading, we gotta teach those skills using different methodology and intentionality so that we can close those gaps and then allow the students to go further in with their reading, for example. So that's the work that we're doing. Our system is really getting to the point of, I feel confidently, going to be able to start to see some nice growth here in the next year or two.
So how do you monitor that in the immediate? Is there a way?
Yeah, through, we have weekly progress monitoring that we can do to look at whether or not the interventions we're using are having a direct impact on a weekly basis, so we can measure that. Some of the programs that we're using have internal measures. A lot of them are very, very focused on those skills and providing multiple repetitions of those skills to create new neural pathways. And so essentially, we can see that through the programs, the output of the programs and the reporting that we get through those as well. So monitoring those, if kids aren't making progress, then we have to switch the intervention, but we don't do that too soon. We have to make sure we can try to coach kids and motivate them, because it's hard work. Reading is the most complex thing for our students.
And writing, reading, writing, those are very complex.
And writing, yes. Yes, and we have a new intervention that we're implementing for writing. We train several staff members to, to help in this process too. So we are really targeted and trying to close those gaps in an accelerated way right now in our department for special education.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you refresh my memory? When did the new reading program that aligns with Act 20, when did that go into effect, like?
So we are in our third year of implementation. There was pilot, you know, between two or three resources, and then, yeah. So that was the second year last year, and then third year this year.
Second year, okay.
And then at the middle school is second year.
Okay.
And I think with, with that, that's one piece I was gonna say, is sometimes you do see that implementation dip. This is new resources, a lot of new learning for the teachers. So I've been meeting with the ELA committee, which is a rep from each building at each grade level. And we're really looking at those kind of non-negotiables, look fours, that we can really help now fine tune some of the teacher practice. And they're helping guide, are we doing learning walks to help see, like, okay, now we're in to our third year? How is this implementation, it's all part of kind of like an implementation cycle to help support that? So those are things that will all help that universal implementation, and then we'll see that, those results as that gets stronger with the students.
And just to clarify, that's K-5?
K-5, yep.
Jenny, you mentioned there's a couple of other areas that you have previously turned over.
Yeah, socioeconomic would be our other ones, or economically disadvantaged tend to have similar achievement gaps, maybe not to the degree of what they see in special ed. And then sometimes between our, our ethnic groups, we can see some of those changes. But I would say it's special ed, then it's socioeconomic, and then some of those other subgroups.
So you spoke about K through five interventions. Do you want to go in and just talk a little bit about what's happening at the middle school for these interventions? And, you know, what's been implemented for this year moving forward? Because I know the high school kind of started their new thing, as, you know, she was talking about. So just kind of want to hear a little more about that and what we're doing to, like, assist that for the year.
We actually have that in our next presentation, because we've been working on that. So are you good to wait until December 3rd to really dig into the tier one, tier two, and tier three, and how we meet those needs?
I'll be on the edge of my chair, come on.
Awesome. Of course, give me a cold word. If you really can't wait, call me hard. Yeah, I can wait, that's fine.
Have you noticed, like, obviously, we're comparing certain grades, but like eighth grade, their performance this year compared to the year before, like, is it comparable with that grade? And I know it's the forward exam, not isn't taken every year, but.
Forward is for ELA.
So I guess my question is, is are the kids in eighth grade keeping consistent? And then what's happening is when you just report eighth grade, it looks different?
Well, the problem is different tests. So regardless if we're talking our local assessments, so then we switch from an AIMS Web to HMH Growth Measure or Forward Exam to Pre-ACT, and then to ACT. So sometimes you're comparing apples and oranges, but I think you can still talk about longitudinally. If, if it's a group that maybe isn't making progress, that probably continues, even though, you know, you're trying different things. You have different interventions in there, you're focused on universal, but hopefully you, you make some gains. Like we were talking, that you really want to be making those gains.
All right. Can we move into AIMS Web? So AIMS Web is our K-8 assessment system for the reading and math. And it, we use that to screen and monitor students three times a year. That's in the fall, winter, and spring. And then really, this data is used, it's nationally normed, and it's really used to identify skills, track growth, guide instruction, kind of help with identifying those students that they, that teachers need to dig deeper with. We adopted this as part of the Act 20, because that's required for 4K through third grade. But we expanded our use through eighth grade in both literacy and math. And this year marks that the first year that we've had a full year of AIMS Web data after transitioning from Fast Bridge. So now that's giving us kind of a clear baseline and to understand how our students are performing. And then on the slides, you'll see students scoring at or above average, or at the twenty-six percentile or above. So this is our kindergarten data, and it represents a composite score of, they had to do letter naming fluency and letter word sound fluency. And again, this is a composite that's used for the personal reading plan if needed. That's, yeah, that's all I have there. First grade shows this, our students were assessed with oral reading fluency. And just to kind of give you a little bit, the first graders had, at the beginning of the year, had to read eighteen words per minute. By the end of the year, it's fifty words per minute, so that was really some nice growth across the year for them. And then in second grade, this is also the reading composite, which is reading comprehension and vocabulary. So we saw growth from seventy-four percent to eighty-five percent for our students. And then in third grade, also measuring that reading comprehension and vocabulary, we had eighty-three percent of our students performing at or above average in spring. And then in fourth grade, we saw growth from seventy-nine percent to eighty-six percent. And again, that's still that reading comprehension and vocabulary. And then fifth grade, in the spring, we had eighty-nine percent of the fifth graders scoring at or above in that reading and vocabulary.
And then our sixth grade, we went from eighty-three to eighty-nine percent with big gains, moving kids from low average to at or above average. We went from ninety-two to eighty-nine. Not quite a hundred percent sure why there was a decline with that grade level. There isn't any rhyme or reason, to be honest with you. We're trying to figure that out still, and just making sure that hopefully doesn't happen again. And then eighth grade, we went from eighty-nine to ninety, so.
The one thing I would add is, you're probably seeing that, you know, our forward exam scores were lower. Our aims are higher. Screener, they should correlate, but they aren't always correlating. You know, because we would expect, like, if in wintertime, we're hitting an eighty-nine percent, well, on forward exams, shouldn't we be close to that? And obviously, we weren't, so there's not always that alignment as well, but.
Have you had any discussions externally with other districts? Are they finding that same non-correlation between the four exam and AIMS Web?
We did some extensive with third grade, and it came out of one of our, our meetings in the springtime, or maybe it was the August one, where they were, no, I think it was even be, it was over the summer.
It was over the summer.
Because I remember I shared the spreadsheet with her, and I said, let's, let's do this, and let's see what we're seeing compared to what the other districts were. Because our person said that when he was going in doing data retreats with other districts, they were noticing big. they were noticing big discrepancies. And so we, we were very similar.
Yeah, yeah. Especially cause that third grade, they have to be proficient on the reading. If a student has a personal reading plan, they have to be proficient on the forward reading at third grade as well as proficient on the Ames Web oral reading fluency, and that's the big discrepancy. So that is something that is an issue that we're all trying to work through and figure that out.
We would also say, because Ames Web has to be given forty-five days before the end of the school year. In the meantime, Forward Exam falls within that same window. So for, especially for third graders, it's a killer. Because then all of a sudden, they either are doing Ames Web or they've already done Forward Exam, and it's probably within a two-week window of, all right, you're gonna get your first time ever of taking a big state assessment, and then you're also going to do your Ames Web, so.
How long does the Ames Web test take for the student?
Depends on the kittle.
Okay, like.
So it can vary. Some kids can do it in fifteen, twenty minutes, some kids will take an hour.
Okay.
And the middle school's a little longer. Sometimes it'll go a full class period, which is fifty-two minutes, or it can go two full class periods. It's a little more complex.
And it depends on the math or reading.
Sure. And then how about the, sorry, I just lost the name of the other one.
Forward.
Forward. How about the Forward Exam? I'm assuming you take it subject by subject, or do you do everything in one day?
No, so the ELA and the math and Forward have different test sessions. So there's, I believe there's three.
Three.
I think three.
They changed that some.
Three, four, three. And most of them are close to forty-five minutes. I think that's something that we see elementary-wise, like, and there's so much text on the screen for the Forward that a lot of kids give up before they even read the passages. They just start clicking. So I know a lot of our buildings, for you included, like, we're trying every incentive. We're giving them snacks, we're telling them to slow down, we're doing some test-taking strategy things before then to just try to get them to slow down and really show us what they know. Because so many of them do just get frustrated and give up and just start clicking.
So in the classroom setting, do you have anything in reading that is similar to that? To kind of increase that stamina for the kids?
We have done some, some work like through our intervention time with that, with part of that test prep, like having them do some online reading, answer some questions. Or is there some of them HMH too, with the.
HMH has weekly assessments, and they have module assessments after their three-week module. And our third through fifth grade teachers generally give those digitally as well to get that experience with that. And it's, it's not exactly the Forward, but it's very similar, similar format to help build, you know, build that. But I do think it's, there is, you know, it's, it can be a tough process for those kids. And, and the teachers start out, especially in third grade, doing a little bit more guided to kind of like learn test-taking and then, you know, gradually release that to them so that they can get that practice.
Can you remind me, the screeners, those had to be approved, and we had to choose ones per the state? Or was it the curriculum?
Which they went out for RP, they made their selection, and they told all of us that we were giving that one for 4K through third grade. We decided though, like, because you wanna have data that, you know, you can see. So we decided we weren't gonna continue with FastBridge and the other grades, and we'd make the switch all to Ames Web for three through eight.
And that screener really has a high level of sensitivity to really get down to the skills of reading. So that is why they selected it, because that allows us then to be able to figure out what to target, to be able to teach in repetition, to be able to get those skills so that they can come fluent and then be able to comprehend. And if, there's a vocabulary piece to this too, so like if students don't understand words, then we can teach vocabulary to be able to help with comprehension too. Even if the person's a fluent reader, can read like the wind, if they don't understand what they're reading, you gotta work on vocabulary. So there's so much complexities in it. But the screener does do a nice job in getting down to that skill level.
Thank you.
So the HMH was given at the high school. The twenty-four, twenty-five school year was the fifth year that our ninth and tenth graders took that test, and it measures growth or achievement in ELA and in math. So these are the ninth grade results, so this is our current tenth graders. We saw the spring number rise when compared to the percent of students who were on or at grade level in fall. Looking at the tenth grade, which is our current eleventh graders, the percentages remained the same from fall to spring. You'll also notice that there was a rise in scores from the fall to the winter, and then there's a dip again from winter to spring. This is a trend that is very common, that we've seen at the high school level across districts. I've seen it in all the ones I've been in, that you see that rise, and then you see that dip come spring, for whatever reason.
What are they testing on this HMH? We're getting less than forty percent of our tenth graders reading at or above level. What is that telling us?
HMH test is, is supposed to be on the standards that are expected at that grade level for ninth grade, but it is adaptive, excuse me, for ninth and tenth grade. So there's a ninth grade version of the assessment, and then there's a tenth grade version of the assessment. And so they're testing on the standards that are like the common core standards for ELA. But as students go through the test, if they struggle, it will drop down a little bit at that level and kind of, you know, test them right at that level, which is very similar to Ames Web, so.
Are we, are our tenth grade English teachers seeing a correlation that these percentages are accurate in their classrooms?
I would say, they would say they see more skills than what the data is necessarily showing them. I think what they would tell you is that our students, by the time they get to tenth grade, start to be fatigued from the three, three times of testing. And I don't know how well you can speak to this as well, maybe, like, they've been tested three times per year, all the way moving up to high school, through high school. This is, tenth grade is the last year that they get that like fall, winter, spring. And I think sometimes our students are feeling done with testing at that point. But I don't know if you have that experience.
If I may add on, I've taken the HMH ninth grade, tenth grade, all the shebang. And like, it's just like a test that everyone dreads. Like, you walk in, you walk in your math class, like, oh, like, what is, what is Mr. Martinson gonna teach today? And it's like, HMH, and then it's like, oh, God, here we go again. I would say like, the majority of students just think it's like every other test. They don't really put their all into it. I would say like, even like, I know like kids that are like in NHS, in like clubs, activities, all like, great students. And they're like getting like that level, and it just like, they don't, I wouldn't say, like, I don't wanna say like they don't try, but like, it's not looked like highly, like, at like a high school level. It's like, oh, like, this doesn't really matter, like, this is just for like the district to know, so why, why, why should I try?
And we've, we've tried to incentivize. I know, like, Mr. Smith can talk about the incentives that they've done for the past couple of years, where for students who showed a certain amount of growth, or the, you know, and then at random kind of poll, they would earn like, get a prize or something like that. So, I mean, this is kind of the result that we have even with those incentives in place. So I don't know that they've necessarily done what we were hoping that they would do. But, you know, we try to explain why it's important and that this data is used. Like, we have a, a learning support teacher at the high school who looks very closely at this data and uses it as one data point that helps her to identify students who need tier three support in reading, so. But, you know, we, we don't just use this and only data point for that. So it's, it's challenging to get kids to wanna test.
I think math department had some success, because then that's how they were pulling kids to give extra support. And then the kid would be like, whoa, I didn't take it serious. Can I retake it? So I don't have to come and get this extra help. And then suddenly, those kids numbered, the numbers of kids that needed the help and were scoring lower dropped. So math kind of had a system that they came up with a year or two ago. And I, maybe math, they take a little bit more serious than ELA right now.
But one of the things also, I looked at the HMH last year, we analyzed the questions that were on it. And if I remember the data correctly, ninety percent of the questions on the HMH were basically vocabulary questions. Here's a sentence with a word in it, what does it mean? By the high school level, we don't really work that way. We're more critical thinking, you know, versus a bigger picture, not, here's a sentence, what does this one word mean? So it's a different type of assessment than I think a lot of the teachers are seeing in their classrooms, cause we, it's just not what we necessarily do as much.
You know, that's certainly not making excuses for anything, but I think to build on what Emma was saying, there is a certain reality to, when you're a high school student and you're out for co-curriculars and so on and so forth, then you're worried about your grades and your classes, and those become the priority. There, Luke was mentioned earlier with the elementary, there's also that kind of overlap of the time window of when the spring HMH is in relation to the pre-ACT. And so to ask students to really dig in and do their best on two tests that have nothing to do with their grades is, is a little bit of a challenge, so.
And then this isn't a state-required test or anything like that, we just use it. So I mean, are we essentially wasting our time with this? I mean, that's kind of what, I mean, I, I know it's kind of, everybody looked at me a little weird, but like, everything I heard just now from this means like, anytime we divulge into this, because there are other data sets that we can use, we're just kind of wasting everybody's time. The kids don't like to take it, we don't get anything extra out of it from the state or anything like that. There's really no benefit other than, oh yeah, you're in fifty-three and forty-seven again. I mean, is there better use of these hours for staffs, for students, things like that? I mean, like, if we went a year without this, would anybody's life be terribly affected?
Well, we originally didn't have a screener at ninth and tenth grade for many years. And I think I was one of my first years in the role when I was working under teaching and learning that had some, some teachers in that department saying, look at all this great data that they have at the middle school level. They have like a point of measurement throughout the year that's independent from just our, the assessments that we create that we can see, like, how are students performing? So really, this came about as a request from our, our ninth and tenth grade teachers at that time. I mean, the data right now is not showing what we would like it to see. We do have another assessment that we're looking into as a potential. MAP is an assessment that we have, like, special ed doing some piloting with, because we are looking to see if there might be a better measure that we could use. But right now, this is the data that we have, and we try to use it as to the best of our ability. We do use it with our tier three students as part of that picture for identifying students for extra needs, so.
And we used to give the MAP assessment, it used to be our tool, and we found it very, very useful. But we made the switch to FastBridge for a couple of reasons at that time. Number one was the cost. We couldn't afford fifteen dollars per student to be giving MAPS. Number two, the amount of time it was taking. Like Ames Web, FastBridge were down to, you know, a third of the amount of time of what it was taking to do MAPS. However, on the backside of it, MAPS provides you with a continuum of learning or Decarter, and I think you guys used to give it as well when, so like, you get this RIT score, you get that score, and it's like a yardstick, and it's equal increments. And like you can say what they're supposed to grow in a year, and then you can look at the current and it, or continuum of learning and be like, they really are struggling in this area. And then it gives you how you can support them. And so actually tomorrow, we do have a person coming in, and we're digging into our, our reading programs as well as the data, and then she's going to spend some time with high school on HMH and on MAPS as well. So then we'll, you know, we'll think about that, because there, you know, some people would like to give the pre-ACT another time too, but I don't, the kids who aren't college-bound, I don't think it matters whether you give them the pre-ACT, you give them HMH Growth Measure. It's not in their wheelhouse, they're not, they don't feel like it impacts them.
So is the HMH kind of a screener, supposed to kind of let you know, forecast what kids are gonna do in, for the ACT? Like, that type of screener, or this is just a screener?
It's more a screener to identify students who are well below where they should be so that we know which students would need that foundational support for tier three. That's kind of the purpose of a screener in general, whereas like a Forward or ACT is a much longer test that's getting far deeper into context, so.
I did ask her tomorrow to come in if, because she said that there has been some correlation on MAPS as well as HMH, so more so on MAP. And so I'm interested to see what she brings to us tomorrow.
I mean, do we see a big jump, or really any kind of jump from, okay, at eighth grade, we've identified kids that need this like tier three type intervention and stuff like that. So obviously, we know moving forward into high school, that still applies in a lot of situations. Do we identify a lot more new people that need tier three type intervention in high school? Or are we kind of like, I mean, I hate to say it, but at that point, we probably should be identified. I mean, you would've lost your foundational skills along the way, so I.
Occasionally, we do have some students, and we also have students who move into the district that we don't have previous data on, but obviously, our LSTs work together. So our high school LST meets with our middle school LSTs to find out like, what students have you been working with? Who's kind of on your watch list? So that we're taking a closer look at their data to make those identifications. And just a little bit challenging, I mean, like Ames Web is a different assessment than HMH, so you're always gonna have a disparity in what those results look like. And it's, Ames Web isn't normed up to the high school levels, only normed up to A three levels. We can't use it at the high school, even though it might be easier for us to have one assessment district-wide. It's just, it cuts at eighth grade, so it's a challenge too.
So, I'm sorry, I keep jumping.
I was just gonna say, and to kind of go off Josh's point, you said, you know, originally, this came to be defined in tenth grade, because, you know, there's an ASK, which I can see why they would've asked for it, it makes sense. But seeing now that the ASK, I mean, in my opinion, it's paying a lot of work on our learning support teachers, right? Because you have now sixty-one percent of the tenth grade to think about, and if they're students that just aren't putting in the effort, because it's, you know, they're not college-bound, they don't plan on doing that, you know, to Josh's point, is it, is it kind of wasting our time, our resources? Is there a way to maybe hone this in and select certain students to take this test so then we can give them opportunities? Teachers are with these students every day, so they could say, okay, I have five students that I think should really, you know, take the HMH test, so we can see where they're at. And then have it more specific geared towards students that may actually take it seriously, so then we can really see where they're at and if they actually need that extra tier support. I mean, just something, you know, think about, obviously, things don't change overnight, but, you know, just kind of considering that, it's sixty-one percent of tenth grade, that, you know, our learning support now has to figure out who really needs the help, who just didn't care, or, you know, whatever that may be. Yeah, it's, it's data that I, we, she spends a lot of time working together. Yeah.
And what, do you have any insight on what to do about all these, like, prepping you guys for tests? Is there any incentives that you can think of? Or I, I hope that we're not blindsiding them very often, like she described, where they walk in and, it's the test day. Like, we should prep them probably, and we've talked about that at meetings before, that we talked about it before we.
Yeah, teachers are definitely like encouraging, like, I wouldn't say like they're not like, like focusing on this, like, you know, like, I would, like, we don't really know when it's gonna happen either. It's like, oh, oh, the HMH is on Wednesday, be ready for the test all period. But, no, like, I don't know, I feel like the transition from like what you were saying, like, from eighth grade to mid, to high school, like, eighth grade, middle school, like, your grades don't matter that much. But like high school, oh, that could affect your whole life, like. And then like, that's when like it starts to get real, and, oh, but this test doesn't matter. Like, it just, it's just like, it's like silly to a lot of students, like, you could, like, the, the number, I forgot it. But the number of tenth grade students, well, eleventh graders now, but, that have been below average. But there's like a whole, like, you could, if you look at like the NHS inductees list, there's like a low percentage of students that are like brilliant, and I'm assuming, I don't know, but I'm sure there is a couple on that list that match up. So I don't think, I just really don't think it's taken seriously. I don't really get a sense of like need for it, like, teachers don't really use it. Like, it's like, oh, back to the, back to learning the next day, so it's not really like, I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, so you like take the test, and then do you really see any difference from?
No, no.
When do you see results? Like, how, how soon do you see results?
Right away. And it's, it kind of sucks, because like, the teacher usually has like, your like, where you stand on the board. So like, oh, I just failed it, okay, awesome, like, I'm a failure, like, oh, great, but, yeah.
So on the flip side, after hearing what Emma said, is there a way that it could be part of their grade? Do we add this as a, you know, certain percent? Is there any way to incorporate this in a way to make it matter?
I think what's challenging about that is that some students might be giving it all their effort, and unfortunately, that is genuinely showing what they. all their effort and unfortunately, that is genuinely showing what their ability level is and it might be in that red area. So I hate to, you know, harm their grade by giving, even though they've tried and that their effort is genuine and they just, they don't have the skills, do you see what I'm saying?
But if you're not, if you're not meeting the, if you're not meeting the standard, then you shouldn't be passing the class.
Right, your grades shouldn't pass that.
Like, are we just letting everybody pass the class then?
No, no, I mean, there's a lot, an assessment is just a different measure of ability than like the work that you put into class and coming in and, like, cause there are students who perform really poorly on standardized assessments, that will go into class and then work extremely hard, do the homework, come in for extra practice, maybe do a retake to show their learning, but when it's in a, like a, a lengthier test or a high stakes assessment, that's really challenging for them. So it doesn't mean that they don't understand the content, it's just that type of performance isn't in their wheelhouse.
What if it's weighted not like fifty percent of their grade or anything, but weighted more like an assignment or like a project or, you know, just something like that that's not going to dramatically drop if they, you know, struggled or whatever, but also it's gonna impact it a little bit just to give them an incentive for doing a good job and putting effort in?
I, I think we as adults, because we grew up in, and probably I would say grades motivated me, or maybe it motivated, it motivated me as a parent too, but it didn't motivate my kids. Like, I could tell them I want As and Bs, but especially for one of my kids, that was not motivation. That's what mom wants, that's not what he wanted. So I, I just don't foresee, you know, and we've came so far along in our grading practices and our guiding principles, um, that are even in policy, that, that to me, this is like that you're grading also on attendance and participation and now you're kind of grading on whether a kid perseveres. To me, that's a lifelong learning skill and not part of their content grade. So I think it'd be pretty difficult to assign a, a grade or, you know, even, you know, extra credit points, we don't wanna be doing either, so.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, um, uh, I would say like, if like we like were able, I don't know if we can do this, but, um, if like it was like, oh, like you could get like five extra credit points, like nothing major, like, but like that could do a lot to someone's grade. Like, if someone's like, oh, I'm gonna really give my all for this, like, oh, I can get five extra points for just taking a test where I already have to take the test? Like, I feel like that could, like, within like my friends and like who I associate with and who I've encountered, um, I would say that that would motivate students if like, oh my gosh, I can actually do something with this instead of just like, okay, well, there's the test.
And not necessarily more maybe based on growth versus where you actually land, just as long as you're growing, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're up to the standard, which is fine, but as long as you're growing, let's incentivize that or make it, you know, worth wanting to grow.
Something that we can consider. Oh, I'm up, sorry. So, um, we're bringing the ACT again, uh, like I mentioned last time when we talked about math and science, the pre-ACT secure is what our ninth and tenth graders take and then the eleventh grade takes the ACT with writing. Again, this is a kind of a college prep exam, not all of our students are planning to go to college, but this is our state required assessment and so this is what everyone is required to take. Um, so the first results that you're seeing are going to be our ninth grade results on the pre-ACT, but these are our DPI performance levels. So if you remember from last time, DPI has their own cut scores that they use to determine whether that we're developing, approaching, meeting, or advanced for our students. The other unique thing about ELA is DPI creates what's called an ELA score where there's not actually just an ELA subject within ACT or pre-ACT. So for pre-ACT, it takes the English score and the reading score and does a combination of those two to create their ELA scores and then the cuts. So, um, based on DPI's performance levels, fifty-nine point two percent of our students were meeting or advanced in ninth grade. But if you look at ACT, so now again, these are the ACT benchmarks, which is telling us how well students would perform in a college-level course in English. There is telling us how many of our ninth graders meet pre-ACT benchmarks, so that's like they're already, they're where they're supposed to be as ninth graders or meet, meet the ACT benchmarks, that are already prepared to do well in a college-level class. So, um, in English for ninth grade, our results were sixty-one percent at meeting or exceeding that, that benchmark. And then these are the reading results, like I said, there's English and there's reading for ACT. So here you can see there's forty-nine percent of our ninth graders meeting or exceeding that benchmark from ACT. And then of course, our tenth graders also take the pre-ACT secure. So here are those DPI performance levels that combine our reading and EL and English. So forty-one point seven percent of our students are meeting or advanced for tenth grade. These are our English results for our tenth graders, so forty percent are meeting or exceeding the, um, pre-ACT benchmark from ACT in English. And then thirty-seven percent of our tenth graders are meeting or exceeding the pre-ACT benchmark in reading.
So if this is to prepare them to predict how they'll do on the ACT essentially, is it the same test in ninth and tenth grade?
Yeah, the cuts, I mean, essentially, like, like the questions may change, but it's measuring the similar thing and then the cut scores are gonna be different based on ninth grade versus tenth grade.
So those tenth, tenth grade scores are not good. If you look at them in ninth grade, was it similar, you know?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to pull that up separately, I can't right now.
No, but what they did in eighth grade, did it predict what would happen in tenth grade?
I looked back to see how they did on HMH, but I didn't look at the pre-ACT secure. But I do know that on the HMH, they performed not as well as our current ninth grade or the ninth graders that you saw tonight, when they, not tenth graders, were ninth graders, the scores were lower. So this might be this class, but I'd have to pull that up, I can do that here in a second.
Talking about motivation, I mean, I heard that pop up, not motivated to do these things, I mean, is that kind of the overall class? I don't wanna insult anybody, but.
I mean, I hope not. We want them to take it seriously. Uh, we like to think that, you know, students might be a little bit more invested when it's pre-ACT and ACT, um, because that's something that's a one-time-a-year thing and we talk about it and prepare them and try to hype everybody up to take it, cause it's our big statewide assessment. But certainly there are some students who don't see the value of the assessment and don't see it applying to what they plan to do after high school. Um, here are our eleventh grade results, so you're just going to see meeting or not meeting. The difference with our DPI cut scores for eleventh grade is ELA now combines reading, English, and as well as writing, cause we take the ACT plus writing in Wisconsin. So, uh, this is showing you that forty-nine point one percent of our eleventh graders were, um, meeting in the ELA results. And then here, this is another kind of separate score than what we just talked about. These are our composite scores for the, for the English subject. So you can see where our composite for English fell within the FRCC from the previous year to last spring. So, um, on the left, you see we had eighteen point seven, we went down to a seventeen point six, and we did drop one spot, um, in the FRCC, I'll just double check my notes, cause that's a little bit small. Yes, we went down from fourth to fifth in English. And then here you see our reading results, um, and again, you can see that we had a drop from twenty point two to nineteen point three, um, however, we did remain in the fourth spot within the FRCC. And that is our reading composite score. So you're kind of seeing multiple different measures within ACT across these slides.
In the classroom, are we seeing that our high school English teachers are having, um, concerns about half of the class not meeting levels of reading? And if so, are we doing anything to change our curriculum to address those deficits?
So we did last year, um, when I was still in my previous position, to have our English department do a pilot of a couple of different resources. HMH wasn't one of them. They didn't like either of the resources that we piloted, so then what we ended up doing is, um, they did have a meeting in the summer and kind of looked at their curriculum vertically, so ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade in particular, cause those are our required courses, and really examined the rigor, um, that they had at each of those levels. So are we asking our students to do the same, you know, how many long papers are we asking them to do in ninth grade versus tenth grade versus eleventh grade? And are our expectations increasing as we go from ninth to tenth to eleventh to ensure that we're raising our rigor? Same thing with like, what, how many long reads are we asking them to do? How much independent reading are we asking them to do to try to increase the rigor and better prepare our students for these types of exams? They also adopted a program this year, it's called MEMBEAM. I don't know if you've ever heard of MEMBEAM, but it's a vocabulary-based program. So we explored a couple of different ways of approaching vocabulary in particular, uh, because we saw that as a need and MEMBEAM is what they decided to use. We have a few-year contract with MEMBEAM and students are expected to do, um, a certain number of minutes per week within MEMBEAM and it's individually created for them, like the program gets to know the student and then creates different lessons for them around that. So that they are aware that we need to increase the rigor and they have been working towards that.
On next two weeks, CISA Six is offering like a high-quality instructional practices and strategies focused specifically on English language arts at the high school level. So, you know, Deanna, Jolynn, myself, Matt, and then we have two other.
Three, three ELA teachers that'll be today. And that'll cover each of the grade levels. Some of our teachers teach both ninth and tenth, and then we have at least one also that teaches eleventh, that'll be going.
And then they're offering it again in February, so if we find that this is valuable, then we've talked about more individuals from ELA and then we kind of wanna get a field if it has a focus on disciplinary literacy, if it would impact science, social studies, and math, in how they're teaching strategies in English language arts as well, so, um, I mean, the, what they shared with us in a mini-session looked really good, so, um, we're going to take a team to that as well.
So it sounds like to me that because the students' motivation is down and the students' scores are dropping, that we're putting more pressure on teachers to do more work, harder work. But then I also heard that during your PLT, we're gonna go to one silent PLT and all the other ones?
Yeah, um, English is like a silent one, cause sometimes it gets loud in the other ones, but, so like, if you like have to like, oh, I have to lock in on this assignment, I'm gonna go to English instead of going to like math where it's like more like collaborative and, yeah.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is, or what I'm thinking right now is, we talk about putting emphasis on, on our students and the student expectation, but then they have study time where, like you have to create a science, a silent place for somebody to work. I know, or, yeah, I know there's a lot of work release where kids leave to go do work and then we also have the phone thing. So to me, I'm kind of thinking if we would change the expectations within the school, do you think that would change? Any scores at all, whereas?
And, and I'm not gonna say that they wouldn't, I will say that the scores that you're seeing are from when the expectations were different. You know, what we have from this year isn't, we haven't tested yet and we don't have those results.
Okay.
Um, I will say that the changes within the resource, the purpose of that was because we create, we took our, our teachers, instead of having them cover resource and, and try and work with students out in the big area, we pulled them into their classroom and we call it student support time for our teachers because we want them pulling students into their classrooms to work with them, um, because we think that'll be more impactful than having them out in a large area. And I have heard from, um, teachers that there are students that it took a couple of times of pulling them, that they found that they're willing to work with them in a way that they would never, have never seen out in the resource area. So the idea is to get more face time with teachers, um, and so then they can be out in that resource area and yes, we have told them they can quietly collaborate. And then we heard from student council, we want a silent study resource. So when they don't want to quietly collaborate with someone that's close to them, they're not supposed to be like shouting across the room, that they can go to that ELA resource area. So that's kind of the purpose, trying to get teachers working directly with students as opposed to just hanging out in the resource area.
And, and to follow up on something she said, what is the expectation around phones during those times, PLTs, silent, like, can they be on their phones? Then I heard it was tied to grades, so.
It is, yeah. They're supposed to be at a seventy percent or better in all of their classes in order to be, have their phone out and take a break from the classwork.
Do you think there, is that necessary? Do you think they need their phones during that time? Or would there be some value to help with some of this if we just kept the phones out of the way?
It's been a debate, um, and it was a big debate when we had a committee this summer that worked on this. So this, we had a committee that came in because resource areas and working with students was one of those things that rose to the top and I surveyed staff and went, not with them. And that was a big debate because we closed what was the commons resource area, which was also tied to grades. So that was, if you had a certain percentage in all your classes, you could, for your PLT, go to commons and you could be on your phone, you could be playing cards, you could be hanging out because you were doing well enough in your classes. Since that got shut down, so that we can have the, what we call our Academic Accountability Resource Center, which I can explain in a moment, since that got shut down, the question was like, well, if, if they're supposed to be getting pulled into teachers' classrooms if they really need help and they're doing well in their classes, do we allow them to have their phones in the resource areas? And ultimately, the committee said, let's see how it goes and kind of go from there. So that's, it came from that committee, um, but yes, we certainly have debate and are looking at that at the high school as well.
With the phone thing, um, if, like, in class, most teachers, like majority, um, strictly do enforce like no phones right now, like teaching, um, but like even if you take the, like the phones away, like restrict them, um, oh, why is, why is so-and-so's face lighting up behind their book? But like, you can't like really, it's like inevitable, like, they're gonna sneak on their phones, then they're just gonna, oh, I have to go to the bathroom. And then they're like sitting and they're like for fifteen minutes on their phone. So I think the seventy percent or better is actually working, every time I've gone into a resource center, um, the teacher does enforce that and isn't like just being like, oh, whatever, they're on their phone, whatever, I don't care. But, um, it is working, I would say, from a student standpoint.
Good, I appreciate that. So like these extra times that we're splitting up now, I mean, if teachers, is that like lost prep time for them or where did all this time come from?
When they have student support time, that's when they would have been out having a, you know, working in the resource center. So it's just pushing them into the classroom with students.
So the ACT exam, if, forgive me if I'm ignorant about this, but this is the same test that's been around for twenty-some years, obviously, then, I'll backfire, do we have data on this, like this type of data? I mean, have we seen, I mean, like, twenty years ago was the average score twenty-five and now we have a bunch of?
Can't compare that anymore because when we were in school, we took the ACT to get into college. That was a different ACT, it was pretty much, and the data would be released just for seniors. Now it is the state required assessment and so it's different than.
When did that start? So about ten years?
Ten years.
So I guess my question within me inside twenty years, what's the ten-year frame on this? Like, has there been so many other distractions and things, I mean, added into the classroom? I, I don't know, I mean, ten years ago, were we on iPads yet? I don't quite remember. You know, like, I mean, has the environment changed to a point where you've seen like a big effect on this? You know, I, that's a low, a nineteen is a low score. I mean, that's, I mean, plain and simple, and I, I mean, I understand everybody's scores are down, so I mean, I feel that the, I think, you know, maybe Sarah was alluding to this, there, there might be like something bigger picture here that's, that's doing this than, than just like, you know, the kids don't know what's on the test. I guess it'd be interesting to see what the trend is on something like that.
I mean, I can say that certainly the classroom and the school environment is different today than it was ten years ago and it'll be different in ten years than it is now, so, um, we can look, definitely look at the data, but yeah, I would say there's a difference. We also, um, for a while there were even under a different like schedule, so lots of things have changed. Um, it's kind of hard to pinpoint what exactly is making the difference, so.
If I may, um, like the, like, you take the pre-ACT ninth and tenth grade to, and it's supposed to prepare you to take the ACT and get a feel of like, oh, what is this test actually like? What am I, like, what should I work on over the next couple of years? Like what, like, give me like an idea. And, um, honestly, I would compare it to the HMH for like ninth and tenth graders, um, but it's just more like, oh, you're stuck there all day and you have to take it in a random classroom around the school. But yeah, I wouldn't, I, I, I didn't find, me personally, I didn't find any like, anything from the ninth and tenth, pre-ACT, um, my score was way different. And the only thing that like really, really helped was in eleventh grade, you can, you have the option to take a after-school like class, like, but again, that's like ninety-nine dol, or whatever, how many, however many, how much, oh, however much it is, and like, someone. And like, someone who can't afford that, like, I don't know what they would do. But also like in math, reading, I've noticed like teachers, like, in my math class last year, they would put like pre, like ACT questions, like for, to prep you for the test on your like math test. So you were like, oh, this is like something that would be on the ACT, like, how am I gonna do on this? So then throughout the year, you could see like, oh, I got that one right, like, maybe I'll do really good in math this year. And honestly, yeah, I, I'm not surprised that the pre-ACT scores are low because it is just like another test. But the ACT, yeah, I would just say like lost some motivation and like not taken seriously, yeah.
I would just add two things to this, and again, not excuses, just kind of observations, you know, is that, to what Jenny said, is, you know, that change from where it was really just those schools to four-year college or university students have taken ACT for the most part, and then the state did make it, the state assessment. So that changed. Now we're on probably ninety-nine point some percent of our students are taking that as that junior assessment. We have two things with that. One is that the, a lot of the colleges and universities now are not requiring students when they fill out the application to even submit an ACT score anymore. And so maybe it's become less important to some students to do well because they know they don't have to submit that. And then as well, because we've seen our, I'd say CTE numbers and our school-to-work and, you know, apprenticeship numbers go up, you know, you don't want to say those, those students on those pathways see less relevance. But if I know I'm, you know, probably going to have a job waiting for me outside of high school because I'm in that and they're invested in me and they've told me if I keep doing a good job, I'm going to have a, have a job after high school. What's my motivation to do well on ACT? And so those are just two realities there that we have to combat in terms of trying to create that relevance for all students, I think.
I'm just gonna say two things about this, and I think we should probably move on it so that we're not here till night. But the one thing I'll say about a screener, when we do that with our students, you know, as kids get older and high school teachers talk differently with the kids as they're older because that's, they're, they're more into their content and they're, they're talking about the seriousness of their content. A screener is really so that we don't ever miss any child, right? And that's always our moral imperative, that we don't let any child drift. So when, when we're doing screeners and when teachers come to you, whether it was two years ago or five years ago or whenever it was, and they ask, like, as we're having these conversations, you know, it would really be nice if we had some data points that we could look at besides this one point that the state gives you. And that's my second point. The state gives us this one point. We can't identify ourselves as a school district just on our ACT scores. That's why we've spent so much time and energy putting together our Future Ready Report Card. That's why we brought all of those things forward. That's why we look at our high school students for all of the other things. If we, if we sat down and brainstormed this and solution, found a solution around all of these things, we don't want to bring our kids back to ten years ago where we're making them only stay in the building and they're not released out so that they have all of these other opportunities. I mean, because we could sit, we could make a solution around a lot of things that maybe would fix one micro-problem. But then we have something else here, and we've got something here that doesn't fit for that student and that student. And I'm not erasing ACT scores. And would I love to have the twenty-five or the twenty-two or the twenty-four, absolutely. And we'll continue to work on it. But right now, we have to look at ourselves as more than just that test score and know that we are doing an awful lot for all of our students. And that's why we have screeners. I mean, I, I would not be a proponent of doing away with screeners. I don't think that our staff would be a proponent of that either because I think that they do like to come together collectively in their departments and say, look, I don't teach that section of math, but when we're looking at all of our kids, this is what is telling us. So that's a great indicator for us to continue the work that we're doing. So, my two cents.
So, looking at what we have, the strengths, reading performance and grades through three through eight was strong with sixty to sixty percent meeting their benchmarks. When we looked in the elementary, Math Plus, it showed positive trajectories for our second to fifth graders meeting their, with eighty to eighty-nine percent of them meeting their spring benchmarks, meeting the benchmarks by spring. And in the middle school, Math Plus, again, the results showed a positive trend with eighty-six to ninety-two percent of students at or above their benchmarks.
Then looking at challenges, we've had some conversation about that, and that our forward exam indicated decline in the area of ELA and the FRCC comparison, and that our written language outcomes on the forward assessment trend below the overall ELA performance, and that our screener data in ninth and tenth grade remain lower than desired, reflecting a key area of need at the high school. And that our ACT ELA at forty-nine percent shows much room to grow towards the FRCC and state.
And then our implications for continuous improvement. We've talked about some of these things already, but enhancing that tier-one writing instruction across the district is a key focus area. That ninth through twelfth performance through some of the instruction, curriculum alignment, and then those exploration of resources. And then building the effective resources and strategies, continuing that work in our early and middle grades to support and expand the success of students, especially as the resources are newer. And then strengthen that interdisciplinary literacy, integrating reading and writing across all the content areas so that students really have that authentic experience.
Next, we're gonna take a look at how we're doing in the content area of social studies. So social studies is assessed in fourth grade, eighth grade, and tenth grade. And this is the fourth grade forward across the district at seventy-three percent advanced or meeting.
And this is the eighth grade of social studies results at seventy percent, and it represents the curriculum from grades five through eight.
Oh, yep, and so what you see here is the high school tenth grade. And so for our high school tenth grade, social studies is the only forward exam. And what you'll see on an upcoming slide is that these three slides you just saw in terms of the data kind of follows a statewide trend. And then also here, last year, we were fourth in the FRCC. A little bit of separation there between fourth and fifth, and third and fourth being very close. Second, third, fourth, very close. There's more separation this year between one, two, and three. And then we did hold on to the fourth slot, spot, but number five is very close to number four.
Well, that's me. So we were talking about our strengths in social studies. So we maintained fourth place in the FRCC in our Forward Achievement Scores, and that we were above the state average within social studies at most grade levels. So at fourth grade, we were at seventy-three percent, and the state average was sixty-three. In eighth grade, we were at seventy percent, and seventy-four for the state. And then for tenth grade, we were at fifty-two percent, and the state average was forty-four percent.
So our challenges are that drop in proficiency between eighth grade and tenth grade, and that's also mirrored at the state level. Social studies also tends to be a lot about reading. And if you aren't at the level of reading that you need to be, then often that mirrors what we see in social studies as well.
Yeah, and so the implications there are just, one is recognition that, you know, there's concern about test fatigue. This is usually one of the last assessments, and so, you know, how are our students doing with that? And then as Brenda just said, and you heard this before on the literacy slides, is that really social studies, to be successful in the social studies exam here, it requires a lot of reading skills. So it's really that continued emphasis on developing those literacy skills to help students be successful not only on the literacy portion of the assessment, but on the social studies portion as well. And then also focusing instructor on graphs, tables, and maps to help students be sure that they develop those interpretation skills which would be required on the assessment, so.
Questions on social studies? All right, we're gonna move on to behavior data. I know this has been focused and has been an ask of the board, has been an ask of our staff, and truly an ask of our families too, just to make sure that we're being consistent and all on the same page. If you want to go on to the next one. I will say, we talked about this at the September board meeting, just that gap between males and females. And the way that we kind of got to that was through our sale process that our learning leader team went through last year in the summer of June twenty-four and then June twenty-five. It has been a great process that has opened our eyes to some things. And when you look at those brutal facts, this is one of those brutal facts of that gap. And we said, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna address it. Sometimes when you bring attention to those data points, sometimes it brings even more attention and highlights that you don't see the whole progress that you want to see, but you have, you make progress towards it. So as I put on this slide too, that consistency, you'll see that as a common theme. We've learned how much we need to be consistent as educators as a whole throughout our district as well as working with our families on being consistent. So, behavior expectations, teaching expectations, reteaching, our, our sit teams, all of that has been a ton of the work that went into this behavior goal last year specifically. All right, so, if you did your homework and looked at some of these graphs ahead of time, you're kind of like, how in the world did we get to these numbers and this data? And I have a whole page of notes that I could read to you and explain to you how we got those numbers. But overall, it kind of gave you kind of the high overview of it. But ultimately, we wanted to find two different timeframes. There are two of the same timeframe, so twenty-three, twenty-four, school year second semester compared to twenty-four, twenty-five, school year second semester. So comparing apples to apples of the timeframe. It's not gonna be the exact same students, but it's going to be the same timeframe. So this is just a sample of one of our schools. We looked at the numbers of majors and minors for girls versus boys, and then we added those up and ultimately got that. So for example, the, on the top, it says girls had eleven majors, boys had thirty-four majors, so a total of forty-five majors. The difference between the boys and girls was that fifty-one percent. So when you divide that thirty-one by eleven, you'll get that big gap in there.
Can you just quick define major and minor?
How are they defined the same for the twenty-three, twenty-four year and the twenty-five, twenty-six?
I guess it's not a quick definition based on all the classes.
So, December third will be more of that as well. So ultimately, we worked a lot last year with a subcommittee on defining what major and minor is and all of the codes. So major is a behavioral violation that requires oftentimes administrative review, oftentimes a family contact. There is oftentimes a consequence. I'm not saying all of that all the time either, because every incident, behavioral incident, is different. But with that, we also then looked at all of those incident codes. So for example, hands-to-self is one that we had a lot of discussion about. So is it, what makes it a minor, what makes it a major? And how does that incident that you're reviewing with a student determine which category it falls into? So you have, if I could pull up, maybe I'll share that with you for December third. I'll write myself a note to add that to my slides. But ultimately, to see all of those different categories, it might be interprogramming, it might be horseplay, it might be physical aggression, which can all be kind of a little bit dicey. But we utilized a subcommittee last year to really define each of those code areas. And then what does it look like as a minor, what does it look like as a major? So I'll, I'll share that with you at December third as well, so that, I'm glad you brought that up.
I'll be waiting too.
So with that, if those were discussed and determined last year, is looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four versus the twenty-four, twenty-five data on par with the majors and minors that are, are they equal? Is there, is there the same understanding of what a major is and what a major and minor are for these two years that you're comparing?
No, and that's exactly why we wanted to get that definition to clarity, to be more consistent as staff for twenty-four, twenty-five and moving forward. So that's exactly, so I, I can see where it may not be apples to apples or oranges to oranges, but it is learning more about what we mean by major or minor as a staff. And that's exactly why we wanted to define it.
Because in looking at this, the, the percentages have increased, which is not generally what you want to see from year to year, but there's probably an explanation for that if you drill development into the majors and minors you're now looking at and having a universal understanding of.
Exactly. If you're clear, if you're more clear about what the definitions are, then you're going to see it. I'll say, under more of a microscope, you are going to probably be able to then, justify is the right word, but be able to differentiate between major versus minor and then align them and code them correctly, so.
Also, last year, we had behavior as a goal, and I think also consistency of behave, like, consistency in, I want to say consequence of behavior, but, you know, I, I only know because where my daughter went to school, one book has, you know, your first warning's this, your second warning's this, and it's consistent every time. Like, every student in that school knows, first time, you know, you're gonna take a walk, or a second time, you know, third time, we're calling a parent. So I think that was also implemented for last year, where now we have consistency of what the consequences are, if you're not gonna have that classroom here, right? Compared to probably the twenty-three, twenty-four where we didn't really have that consistency.
Exactly. And it's, and it's, I will say, being very transparent, we're never gonna be a hundred percent consistent a hundred percent of the time. We are dealing with humans.
I guess the one question I have with this, and I wasn't here when this whole goes, I mean, like, big picture, I mean, that twelve and eighty-seven percent, how far off that is like versus like the incarceration rate in this country? I mean, are we like, I mean, like, honestly, it looks like we're trying to tackle something that's a societal problem. And I mean, overall reduction of, of the behaviors is the goal. Why would work on focusing between boys and girls? It kind of seems like it's, you know, fruition.
Similar to September board's this past, we recognize that a hundred percent, that it was boys and girls, it doesn't matter, we need to become consistent as educators. So we did change our goal, which again, you'll see on December third, so again, wait with beta breath.
Be excited for the question.
We're gonna be excited for December third, so.
And then truly, like, when we first went through sale, like I said, we looked at all of our brutal facts. So this was something that we were like, whoa, this is a gap between males and females. So we thought, let's just dig into this to see what we can figure out. And as you'll see on some of these other slides, we had, we did make progress, which is, is great. But we also recognize that consistency for behavior across the board is what we need to do again as educators. I know it sounds like a broken record, but it truly is what we believe and what we are learning and growing together by as well.
Yeah, I mean, I look at this data and I see the, the great part is there's a ten percent reduction in occurrences. That, that's something to take into consideration, I think, is a commendable thing.
So then, similar to kind of what you had said, and this is where it's helpful to have just a little bit more visual. The closer to, if it's green, then it means that we have made a, a growth in the right direction towards closing that gap ultimately. Our goal last year, so not this year, but our goal last year was to reduce that gap between males and females. Even that white is, is close to green. The lighter the shade red, closer to growth, the darker the shade red, we actually went the opposite direction. So, if you want to go to the next slide then. So these are all of our elementary schools across the district. Like I said earlier too, when you bring attention to something and you really dig into it, sometimes your data does get worse because you are analyzing it and you are trying to do something about it. But as you can see, all of our buildings had at least one area of positive growth and that changed towards reducing that gap. And we had this conversation of, it doesn't mean we want you to write up the girls more just because we want to reduce that gap. That was, we had very, very candid conversations about that. But ultimately, this again was our teams, our teacher teams digging into the data and saying, what can we change about our behavioral expectations and reteaching and practicing with our students so that they are having same and similar consistent expectations across the board? And then the last one is middle school and high school. Again, the, the green, but then also even the lighter, we have made growth in the right direction, so.
Okay, so a few strengths that rose to the top around the behavior data was just that there was really a focus on universal with our students. So setting those common expectations, being clear about them, giving kids time to practice those behaviors. And then when maybe those behaviors weren't going so well, spending time reteaching of behavior. And then when maybe those behaviors weren't going so well, spending time reteaching of behavior across all buildings. We saw growth in the right direction in six out of the seven schools when it came to the data that Laura just shared. And then we really are looking at data purposefully. So we're looking at the numbers, putting a face to those numbers, and then putting interventions in place to help those individuals that are really struggling.
So while we have all those strengths, we also have analyzed data and we take a look at one of our challenges. We still recognize that there is a gap between boys and girls and that if you were going to look at strictly the data and the gap, it actually grew. We're still working on really that clarity and defining the majors versus the minors district-wide and making sure documentation is similar based on minor-major definitions. And then also taking a microscopic look brings additional light as to what we may actually need to be having addressed universally.
So the implications really follow then from what Nikki and Brenda just, just explained. And so one of those key things is that our school-wide intervention teams keep looking at the data weekly and getting down to the root causes and then trying to match the appropriate intervention for each student. And then monitoring the progress of those interventions to see if the, if it's working and the student is making progress and having fewer incidents or not, or making changes to that plan and hopefully then helping the student that way. So then the second one, as Brenda said, you know, clarity work around the majors and the minors. And Laura and her team have really been working on that and trying to clarify that. So there's that common language among staff and you can help students understand that. And then as a system, we're just going to get better and better at those things identified as majors are truly majors and they're consistent. And the minors are minors, we're all clear on that. So that work is being done. And then each school this year did revise the behavioral flow chart based on some of that work, and that's going to continue to get refined annually. So.
I'll see that December third also.
Finally, just, you know, Laura spoke to this, but last year, you know, that brutal fact was, whoa, there's a big difference here between the number of incidents our boys are having and our girls and how can we close that gap? But you know, when the team went back this year, it was really looking at, no, our overall goal is just reducing the total number of referrals. And so it's not this boys versus girls thing and recognizing that, you know, there are a lot of factors that play into that discussion about why, why does that difference exist?
We didn't list it on here, but I read all of the self-directed PD that comes in and about three hundred staff members. And about a third of our staff, maybe even a little bit more than that, took advantage of the Behavior Solutions Academy. And every one of those reflections that they wrote were very positive because they recognized coming together as a building team and having those conversations around this topic were very important for them. And I think it really shined a light on how to come together as a building and talk about those behavior flow charts and put in behavior academies and some different things in order to really look at them. So I think that was really a big strength from last summer throughout the whole year. And, and you know, we've talked about, do we have a reboot? And, and it's just expensive to bring them back here. A lot expensive.
And I'd just like to add on a positive, you know, the last little while, my, my wife was actually at elementary school. And then a situation arise and she, you know, works in education and she was extremely impressed on how everybody knew exactly what to do, did it efficiently, effectively, calm the situation. And it was, she was very impressed. So I'd like to add that that was, obviously the stuff that we're working on is, is effective. And it's showing, people are seeing it.
So to go off of that, celebrations, there are a lot of things to celebrate as well. Our focus does continue to be on our strong guaranteed viable tier-one universal instruction for all students to be learning at high levels. We are in year three of our K-five ELA curriculum resource rollout. And then year two for grade six through eight with that resource. So we're definitely seeing an increase in those screener results, especially at those elementary and middle levels. Our professional learning continues to happen around ELA. We use our ACT twenty screener results that we, for pinpointing really, where do we need the supports for reading foundational skills? We're using all of the tools to really dig deeper into data, using Edgoclimber and really focusing on that high-quality tier-two, tier-three interventions to address those student needs. And then looking into our behavioral data, we are having more focused conversations. We're becoming very consistent across the district and really looking at those prevention strategies and universal supports throughout to really ensure the success of all of our kids.
So that brings us to what happens on December third, that now that we've set the stage and you're all excited for it. Where we'll really dig into our hundred-day plans from the fall and as well as into the winter though, that we just came off of our second day of sale because we split the team in two. And so we'll give you a glimpse into that as well. We'll focus on teacher clarity and the behavior flow charts are two of the main things that really are at the center of our work this year. So. And so that kind of leads us into that time with you to look at building goals and action plans on the third. And then also Ally had mentioned that with the DPI, releasing the school report cards. Matt will have a memo and have the results for you. You also though have access to it because that was released November eleventh, twelve, something like that. So we did send out a Sky Alert, so parents have access to that on our website, can see the public report cards already. But we'll spend some time with you on that, on, at that meeting as well. So questions, you know, we kind of answered questions as we went along, but are there additional ones that you'd like to ask the team?
Anything else?
Just thank you for going over it. Sometimes when the results aren't what we know our kids can do, it's a little defeating. But we're only asking questions because we all care. So I just want to say that. And thanks for all the work you put into it.
Thank you for your time. And Emma, thank you for your input.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the personnel report. Stephanie?
So a couple retirements for this school year. We have Sarah Larson, 4K teacher at Clumbrook, had early retirement. We currently have long-term staff in that classroom and it's quite fantastic. Parents are loving her. So it's been okay. Jeff Wagen here, counselor at PHS, and Jackie Baumann, second grade at Sunnyside. And just want to appreciate their seventy-six years combined service.
Make a motion to approve the personnel report.
There's a motion and a second to approve the personnel report as presented. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mark, anything on the act of our budget report?
Yeah, just usually at this November meeting, we've had our financial statements available. They are not completed yet. Because of our, our funding from the federal government, we have to pass a federal single audit. Due to the shutdown, the guidance for the audit has been delayed. So maybe December third we'll have.
Should we start at like four? Might be a good idea.
I don't have anything to read.
All right. So that leads us to the next workshop meeting on December third that we've heard a whole lot about tonight. We will be talking about the twenty-five, twenty-six district building goals and action plans, the DPI report card. We will also begin discussion on policies and will potentially have an update on budget. That is the end of our meeting for tonight. We look forward to seeing you in December. Have a happy Thanksgiving. We do need to move into a closed session tonight to discuss early graduation per Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five one F and a superintendent evaluation under Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five one C. Do I have a motion to move into the session?
Still moved.
There's a motion and a second to move into closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Good night, everyone.